I wanted to make a quick comment on behalf of the Superior Court and good morning. I'm Andrea Sexton. I'm the Court Executive Officer. I wanted to echo the sentiments that Ms. Faira Roberts expressed. The Court is so pleased to have its second annual Adoption Day coming up on November 21st. There aren't a lot of days when people come to court that are joyful days, right? Most people come and see us on pretty bad days for most folks. Adoption Day is an adoption day when we have that court docket is one of the most joyful days if you're ever around. Come see the families that are gathering outside of the courthouse and having their pictures taken. And we're just so proud to be having our second annual Court Adoption Day event. So thank you for recognizing that. And thank you Ms. Roberts and our partner agencies.
Is there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in that matter? Let's move on down to item 6B. This presentation of a resolution congratulating John Hopkins, Amador County Director of General Services, on his retirement. Mr. Hopkins, we're expecting long speeches and grand flourishes.
I've got stories if you want them. I can tell you all kinds of stories.
I don't know about that. Longs are good stories, John.
They're good stories. I noticed that the bust back there is John Begovic, you know, when he was a supervisor. Before I met him, I didn't know who that guy was, but I was building the dais bench at the old courthouse. And this guy would come out of the caucus room and he'd just say, hey, waved me over. I didn't know who he was. And I was running electrical conduit through the floor. And he'd go back into the room and he'd come out a minute later and say, hey, just waved me over. And I'm thinking, you know, this guy, who the hell is this guy? He's looking to...
That was your second mistake.
Oh, yeah. And so he comes out a third time and he says the same thing. Says, hey, and he stays there. And so I stand up, drop my tool belt, and I walk over to him. And he's got a, you know, John could have a, could appear to be grumpy if you didn't know who he was. And I didn't know who this guy was. And so I approached him and I said, can I, can I help you at all? And then he puts his hand on my shoulder. And I'm thinking, now he's touching me? Okay, something, what am I going to do here? And he says, I just was kind of wondering where I was going to sit. The light goes on. And I said, oh, okay. And he says, hey, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Supervisor John Begovic. I said, okay, now I got it. So I cooled my jets there. It was pretty funny to, and then John and I always had interesting conversations as he was the supervisor, as time went on. But I still remember when people were smoking in county buildings, when OES was under GSA and we were running drills with smud for the sirens out there in case the nuclear plant had a hiccup or something like that. It's been a long time. Forty-one years is a long time, guys, so.
That's a long time.
Long time.
What are you going to do now after you retire?
Well, I get to hang out with my, with Lisa. I've been doing that for a long time, but I've been occupied here. So she gets my attention now. That's good. At least I think it's good. She might not think it's so good.
She probably has a list that looks about like this, huh?
Oh, yeah. She has started her list.
Well, anyway, yeah, forty-one years, I think that's, that might be the longest one I've seen, I think.
Long time. I've tried a lot of things in my tenure, even dressing up in, in drag to go out for Secretary's Day, but it didn't work out well. Trevor wasn't going for it, so that didn't, it wasn't going to cut it.
No comment, anyway. Well, anyway, we have a resolution here. And, you know, I guess I'd like to go ahead and read some of it. You're actually, you're born in 1963. You're a little bit older than me.
Yeah.
Got a lot more hair, so congratulations.
Thank you.
So John was born in 1963. After graduating high school, did two years as seasonal firefighter for the California Department of Forestry. After that, he went in the Army. Got out of Army and John went into college, Sacramento State University, graduating with honors. And was hired by Amador County in 1983. And worked as a bunch of different jobs in the county. I will say it looks like you started, started off a square one and worked your way all the way up. And that says, hey, it shows you're capable. That's kind of old school America. People got a job. Maybe they started out pushing a broom and before they're over, they run, they run the company. So it looks like you went that route. And it's actually a pretty good route because you see now in modern times, people get a degree. I'm a certified blah, blah, blah. And they're supposed to, they're supposed to run, they're supposed to run a machine. And they show up with it. They got all the fancy degrees. I've heard this happen. I heard, I heard this actually happened. And couldn't even turn the machine on. They had some old janitor there and they want him to train the new guy. And he'd say, I'll, I'll do it. I want the proper wages for that job. They wouldn't pay him. So the kid wrecked all kinds of stuff. So you start at square A and went all the way to Z. So that's pretty, pretty commendable. And you've got your general contractor's license, 1986, Pyramid Construction, seventeen years. In 1998, you became a special projects coordinator. And within a year, you're a project manager. December 18th, 1999, married your wife Lisa. And you're going twenty-five years of marriage this year. So congratulations.
I don't think I got Pat beat yet, though.
And then in 2001, you were promoted to projects manager, from projects manager, deputy director of general services. We probably served, what, Trevor Matushah?
Yes.
And in 2006, you were promoted to director of general services. And that's when I became supervisor. So we worked together a lot of years. And John, you've worked on a lot of projects at the county. I mean, this building was one of them. I'm sure there's a handful. Basically...
Is there any other members of the public who'd like to speak in that matter? Let's see, and then move on down to item six B. This presentation of a resolution congratulating John Hopkins, Amber County Director of General Services, on his retirement. Mr. Hopkins, we're expecting long speeches and grand flourishes.
I got stories if you want them. I can tell you all kinds of stories.
I don't know about that. Longs are good stories, John.
They're, they're good stories. I noticed that the bust back there is John Begovic, you know, when he was a supervisor. When I, before I met him, I didn't know who that guy was, but I was building the dais bench at the old courthouse. And this guy would come out of the caucus room and he'd just say, hey, waved me over. I didn't know who he was, and I was running electrical conduit through the floor. He'd go back into the room, and he'd come out a minute later and say, hey. Just waved me over, and I'm thinking, you know, this guy, who the hell is this guy? He's looking to...
That was your second, that was your second mistake.
Oh, yeah. And so he comes out a third time, and he says the same thing, says, hey, and he stays there. And so I, I stand up, drop my tool belt, and I walk over to him. And he's got a, you know, John could have a, could appear to be grumpy if he didn't know who he was, and I didn't know who this guy was. And so I approached him and I said, can I, can I help you at all? And then he puts his hand on my shoulder, and I'm thinking, and now he's touching me? Okay, something, what, what am I going to do here? And he says, I just was kind of wondering where I was going to sit. The light goes on, and I said, oh, okay. And he says, hey, I just want to introduce myself, I'm Supervisor John Begovic. And I said, okay, now I got it. So I cooled my jets there. It was pretty funny to, and then John and I always had interesting conversations as, he was the supervisor, as time went on. But I still remember when people were smoking in county buildings, when OES was under GSA, and we were running drills with smud for the sirens out there in case the nuclear plant had a hiccup or something like that. It's been a long time, forty-one years is a long time, guys, so.
That's a long time.
Long time.
What are you going to do now, after you retire?
Well, I get to hang out with my, my, with Lisa. I've been doing that for a long time, but I've been occupied here, so she gets my attention now. That's good. At least, I think it's good. She might not think it's so good.
Probably, she probably has a list that looks about like this, huh?
Oh, yeah. She has started her list.
Well, anyway, yeah, forty-one years, I think that's, that might be the longest one I've seen, I think.
Long time. I've tried a lot of things in my tenure, even dressing up in, in, in drag to go out for Secretary's Day, but it didn't work out well. Trevor wasn't going for it, so that didn't, it wasn't going to cut it.
No comment, anyway. Well, anyway, we have a resolution here. And, you know, I guess I'd like to go ahead and read some of it. You're actually, you're born nineteen sixty-three, you're a little bit older than me.
Yeah.
Got a lot more hair, so congratulations.
Thank you.
So John was born nineteen sixty-three. After graduating high school, did two years as seasonal firefighter for the California Department of Forestry. After that, he went in the Army. Got out of Army, and John went into college, Sacramento State University, graduating with honors, and was hired by Amador County in nineteen eighty-three. And worked as a bunch of different jobs in the county. I will say, it looks like you started, started off a square one and worked your way all the way up, and that says, hey, it shows you're capable. That's kind of old school America. People got a job, maybe they started out pushing a broom, and before they're over, they're, they run, they run the company. So, looks like you went that route. And it's actually a pretty good route, because you see now, in modern times, people get a degree. I'm a certified blah, blah, blah. And they're supposed to, they're supposed to run, they're supposed to run a machine. And they show up, they got all the fancy degrees. I've heard this hap, I heard, I heard this actually happened, and couldn't even turn the machine on. They had some old janitor there, and they want him to train the new guy, and he'd say, I'll, I'll do it, but I want the proper wages for that job, but they wouldn't pay him. But it's like a kid wrecked all kinds of stuff. So, you started at square A, and went all the way to Z, so that's pretty, pretty commendable. And you got your general contractor's license nineteen eighty-six, Pyramid Construction, seventeen years. And nineteen ninety-eight, you became a special projects coordinator, and within a year, you're a project manager. December eighteenth nineteen ninety-nine, married your wife Lisa. And you're going twenty-five years of marriage this year, so congratulations.
I don't think I got Pat beat yet, though.
No. And then in two thousand and one, you were promoted to projects manager, from projects manager, Deputy Director of General Services, who probably served, what, Trevor Mottash?
Yes.
And in two thousand and six, you were promoted to Director of General Services, and that's when I became supervisor, so we worked together a lot of years. And John, you've worked on a lot of projects at the county, I mean, this building was one of them. Sure is a handful. Basically, been very instrumental in keeping the county running. There's a lot of moving pieces, and you got a lot of buildings to maintain. You got the jail over there, I'm sure is a, yeah, it's a, was a quilt of many colors. And jail expansion project, which began in two thousand and seven, did a lot of work on that, made sure that thing came out pretty well. Served the county good for a lot of years, and right now, you're kind of managing another jail expansion project. So, we'd like to thank you for your efforts on behalf of the county and making sure things are run well, and just working hard. I mean, I know a lot of times I'd be, you know, make a phone call, or you'd call me, and it's like, wow, seven o'clock, and Hopkins is still at his office working, so you gave it your all. Anyway, so we have a resolution here congratulating you upon forty-one years of a service to county, and...
Thank you.
Do you have any, before he passes, how about maybe any comments from the board?
Forty-one years of doing anything amended, but having a job...
Now, wait a minute, how long you been married?
I lost count.
Yeah, there you go.
The people you have deal with every day and keeping everybody on is, is a big job. You did it well, congratulations.
Thanks, Pat. I still remember when we were playing basketball.
Yeah, John, just like to say thank you for all your work to the county, your dedication, your years of service, and good luck, and enjoy your, your retirement, whatever, whatever shape that takes.
Same to you, Frank.
Thank you.
Yeah, because you're going to, what are you going to do?
Oh, I got, every, every Tuesday morning, there'll be a board supervisors meeting, and consent agenda will be passed.
John, I want to thank you. You've, you know, my six years here, you've helped me every step of the way. You know, given me the education on Pioneer Park, all the history on everything that, that goes around this place. You've, you've known it inside and out, left, right, up, down, anything else that I could possibly ask you. You've never, ever given me a wrong answer, so it's, it's truly appreciated for everything you've done.
Hey, Lisa, did you hear that? Not a wrong answer.
Not a wrong answer.
She's not going to buy it, John, good luck.
I, I'd like to thank you for always doing, always working hard, probably harder than most people ever would think. I mean, your hours you put in are, you come in early and, and leave late. And a lot of dedication there to the county, to the taxpayers and residents in the county. But also want to thank you for being a good friend, and wish you best in the future. And on your twenty-five years of marriage coming up, that's not too far. So, take your wife someplace good, like Europe or wherever she wants to go.
Oh, God. Yeah, well, thank you.
I hammered you there.
No, I, I'm not going to get away from that, I don't think. Yeah, well, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the county. Forty-one years, you know, what do I say, it's my family, so it's just kind of the way it is. And yes, I've been dedicated to work, just in me, to work. It's the way I was raised. It has been a benefit to be a contractor and a business owner, and some of you guys know that as well. It benefits you on both sides. You understand the bureaucracy as well as the private business side, and I think that benefits things. I've been a good steward of the people's money as a purchasing agent as well, always looking for the best value. And had a good time, you know, and I try to be light about it, too.
Is it, is it true or false, do you ever pose for Tiger Beat magazine? People like Scott Baio and others, so.
I, look, I know you're jealous of the hair, but, you know, no, I have never posed for Tiger Beat magazine. No.
I think you might see a cover of that magazine next week.
So, okay, all right. All right, guys.
Anyway, so we have, actually, any members of the public like to comment?
They, no, no member of the public wants to comment.
Okay, that takes care of that.
There's somebody back there who wants to say something. Come on.
Nope, they're honoring John's wishes. I know John said he didn't want me to read all the...
Ah, there we go.
Oh, Christ. I was just asking for help when I said that.
I wanted to say, I was listening to this upstairs, and I thought, gosh, John said forty-one years, holy smokes. I, the first time I met John, you remember where it was? He was number twenty on the basketball court. I was the referee, and he was one of the players. And not a bad player, but the thing was, I always remember about John was fouls one way or another, he never argued. He said, hey, that's part of the game, and he was always very fair. And I, you know, I have a lot of things I rib John about, he gets me about things. But John did a nice job. He was easy to deal with. When I asked him for help, he was of assistance, and I hate to say this, but I think, kind of enjoyed working with him. So, well done, John. The only thing that really bothers him, I think, about me is golf balls in your yard.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's okay, that's all in good fun.
But anyway, well done, I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Why don't you relate what the Purse employee said when you visited Purse? I thought that was kind of funny.
Well, he questioned me as to why, what was wrong with me and why I was still working. And that's, that's okay.
I just said, hey, I'm old school, man.
I, you know, it goes to show you, I've enjoyed what I've been doing. I, I needed to be entertained with lots of different things, and, and I've had the privilege of, and I mean, it's really been a privilege to have the seat that I've got, that you guys have entrusted me in. So, I, I've appreciated that as well. It's been a good thing.
No, we do appreciate your efforts. Any other members of the public? Well, Mr. Hopkins specifically asked me not to read the whole resolution or all the whereas, so I'll just say we have Amador County Board of Supervisors, Resolution twenty-four dash one four three. He looked, he looked like a deer in the headlights for a second, I'm not reading it. It's just, it's honor, it's a, it's a resolution recognizing, honoring John Hopkins for forty-one years of service to Amador County. So, looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
So, move.
Motion by Forester, second by crew. Can we present it to you, Mr. Hopkins?
You can.
Should we vote on it?
Yes. Roll call. Call on favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Theory unanimous.
No, no.
Nobody's abstaining?
Well, don't make us think about it again.
I'll for the camera.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm certain that we'll have cake and that kind of stuff, so when it gets close to the time.
Oh, sure, you want your cake?
We'll, we'll say goodbye to you then.
Now, does John Begovic say, what are you still doing here? Go have fun. Now, I imagine meeting on John Begovic is probably an interesting time.
It was a good time.
Did you know where he was in life?
Yeah.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah, yeah, and he had his way with me a few times when he wasn't happy. You know, you could tell that with John right away, so. Especially the day I impounded Norm Waters' horse.
Oh, you gotta be kidding.
Well, so I, you know, and I told him, I said, look, there's another stallion out there in a field. I couldn't put it in a field. I got, I had to impound it, it was running around Lower Sacramento Road, but he was just madder and horny. Well, okay, I understand, but you don't charge him anything for it, and get it back there to him. Yes, sir.
Today.
Yeah. Anyway.
Yep. Thank you, John, good luck in retirement. Probably be a little bit of a shock for a while, I'd think. You're going to wake up, and you say, hey, man, I can go do anything I want.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, these guys know, I, I got my phone on me, so, yeah, I'm always available.
He's waiting for the next job.
I am waiting for the next job, I'm, I'm, yeah, that's why I'm here.
We could reverse this, make you work and then retire you.
Get back to work.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any last words?
Any last words? Well, Jim was up here, so all, to all of my colleagues, I really appreciate working with them over the years. They all know who they are. All my direct reports, General Services is home to some wonderful people, and they work hard. They'd have to if they're working for me, right? So, and leaving it in the hands of Glenn, and I think he's going to be in good shape with the crew that he's got. Appreciate the times that I've had with Chuck and Greg and, and previous councils. I mean, God, I think John Hahn, when I was here when I started, and he started as a, as a county council in nineteen sixty-seven. So, yeah, a long time. But I appreciate everything that everybody's ever done and, and worked with me. Really appreciate it, so.
Well, thank you.
Last words.
Well, want to go into the, we're doing now item six C?
Yes.
This is the capital improvement project report?
Yeah, I figured since it was going to be my last meeting, I'd just give you guys an update on some projects, and in particular, the jail project. But before, and, and I've got some little, some pictures here for you guys. But before I get to that, do you have any questions on the report on any of the projects that I've got listed there? If not, I'll talk about the jail project.
The, are we ever going to get rid of the leaks and wet spots in the IT as you enter from the outside?
It's ironic you ask about that. So, here, I don't know, it's probably been a month or so ago, talking with Chuck, I bought the crew a thermal camera. So, the idea is, in before, it was, you know, expensive, a couple thousand dollars with all the equipment. But the, the idea is to locate that leak without having to first tear off all of that fin brick on the outside of the wall. And if I can locate that, pinpoint it, then we might save ourselves quite a bit of money and frustration. But we've never been able to trace the, the leak. You know, water, as you guys know, finds its own path, and it's very difficult sometimes to find out where it's coming from. So, we have that thermal camera, it's on the staff's hit list to, to do before the end of the year, and to start to see if they can't identify specifically where that leak is.
Yeah, I would, because there's no reason they should have to put the material in the IT in that area up on blocks to keep it from getting wet.
Right, right. They've been dealing with it for a long time.
I know, it's, and it was a construction error, but sooner we can identify it, the better.
Right, so that's the, the course going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I will say, in your defense, I mean, as a kid growing up, we had some renovation done in our house. And it changed the roof line, maybe got too flat, I don't know, but we, we tried every damn thing we could think of trying to find, stop that water leak, and it was, it was a bear.
It can be a bear.
You're chasing something behind something, somewhere, coming from somewhere, going somewhere, and, yeah. Jail project?
So, jail project. Just wanted to point out here, if, if you read the little paragraph, I was, you know, going back through time here. You know, we, we started that back in two thousand and seven, and I, I've been teasing Eric Fadness here. Our Architective Record is here today as well, and so is Lance Dufry and Eric Graham from Vanner. But I started that relationship with Eric back then, and he's hung in there with the county ever since. And through AB nine hundred, when we were awarded that twenty-two million, and then turned that money back in, and then subsequently went back out for additional funding through SB eight sixty-three. And through all of that, you know, that total project cost is just, just shy of thirty million right now, and...
I wish, I wish Mr. Christiansen was still here.
Uh-huh.
You can see where some of his road monies, or not road monies, but monies that possibly could have been used for roads as wind. Not by choice, but, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of every, and you know, when you equate that to a building that's just about fourteen thousand square feet, you're just shy of about twenty-one hundred dollars a square foot for a project like that over, over the course of time. It's unfortunate that we got sued with a frivolous lawsuit at one point, but we did. And hopefully in the future, maybe policymakers like yourselves can get a handle on CECL, so it's not used for purposes it wasn't intended for. But through that, though, I really appreciate the relationship that I've had with Eric Fadness and, and his team, Lorenzo Lopez and, and Michelle, and late Bob Peterson even, if you remember Bob. The relationship that we've had with Vanner and getting it off, started off with Andy, who you knew from Vanner, and Lance, and, and Eric Graham, who I don't know if you guys have been introduced to, but he's the guy that's on site every day here with Mark Oliveria. And then my staff, appreciate everything they've done. But along with that, I wanted to go through some pictures. If you go to the next slide, that just shows you the time remaining, the time that we've, the duration here. So, we're a good fifty percent done with the project. Next slide. Those are just some dates, gave them notice to proceed in twenty-four, and hope to be done in, in September of twenty-five. Even through all the rain delays. Next slide. Shows the, some money there to the contractor, which is about, you know, a little over a twenty-three million dollar contract to F&amp;H Construction, which has also, they have also done a great job for us so far. Next slide.
As they're taking the payments, I, I guess they're reimbursing their subs along the way, correct?
Yes.
And it's kind of nice seeing some of the subs come in. I know some of these people, one of them's my godson, that is getting some work out of this, too. So, it's, it's a benefit to some of our local people that work for contractors like Asta and, and some of the others.
It was a, it was a question that we asked all, through the pre-bidding qualification. It was actually a question that we asked folks, and, and encouraged them to engage as much local people as we could. You can see there with the change orders that, with Eric's help and Lance's, and Eric Graham and Mark Oliveria, we're at fourteen-seven, now that...
Not much.
No, it's like, it's like point five-six percent. So, we're doing good. I do know that we'll have a change maybe with, with Vanner coming up, because originally, when they quoted the job, it was a fifteen-month project, and, and we've moved that to about a twenty-month project. We might be able to shorten it a little bit, but...
That means they got more time to get their work done, they should charge us less.
Did you hear that, Lance? But we'll see how that goes. But right now, we're, we're, we're smoking it along right, right now. It's, and we're out of the ground, they actually started placing steel. Next, next slide. There's a picture for you. They were kind enough to put in the, the five million pounds of building materials there that placed on the job. Next slide. That's a lot of concrete, gentlemen, so far. So, almost eight hundred yards of it. Next slide. That's a lot of rebar, too, seventy-five thousand pounds of rebar. Next slide. That's a lot of rock. Next slide. Shows you the basement level. I think we're a little further along now, but it's about ninety percent complete in that picture. Next slide. Gives you the, sort of a semi-bird's view of the parking lot there that we're working on. Next slide.
When the structures open with that concrete being poured, there's proper drainage, so, or do they have to pump it out?
Yeah, no, we got, we got drainage. That gives you a bird's eye view of what used to be before we started, and what it looks like currently today. It's a good-looking picture. Next slide, if there's any. There's a new parking lot. So, that's what it used to look like, and what it looks like today with the retaining wall before we get some paving down. And I think other than that, we have any more slides there? Heather, that's it. Give you some pictures for that.
You know, John, roughly how much you think the CECL lawsuit from the neighbors, how much you think that cost us as far as time running into the COVID and the, you know, lack of materials and expensive materials? Any idea roughly?
No, I, it's, yeah, I, I got more on a rough idea. It's what we reported to BSCC, our overage was twelve point one and some change. So, in two thousand and fifteen, I had this project completely paid for with lease revenue bonds and the capital facility fee with no general fund whatsoever contributing it, or no other additional funding. From that point to today, it's been an additional twelve point one, twelve point two. That's what it's cost us.
It wasn't just CECL lawsuits, it's that we hit COVID, too, where everything blew up in price.
Well, and it's also the, the delays from the state, dealing with the State Farm Marshal's Office and, and BSCC and... and Department of Finance, and State General Services, all, you know, they're, you know, they're doing what they can, but they're not, they're not the most timely folks either. Takes a while to get through that process.
They're gonna be, in the new parking lot, it's not going to have some kind of camera system or surveillance videos, because things happen in parking lots, especially when they're going into a correctional facility.
Why, how would you know that? Marky, you remember?
Yeah.
There will be?
Yeah.
So it's recorded, so you...
See, I'm already getting old. I can't remember what I'm doing anymore. Yes. I don't think it's fenced, though. We took the fence out, you know, so there, it's not, it was originally, we had security of fencing around it, but we've removed that right now, so it's gonna be more like ancillary parking.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, there's reasonable precautions you could take, but at some point, you could say there should be fencing around here, and there should be security gates at each entrance with guards, and, you know. Personally, it's like, you want some safety, but also I do value my freedoms a little bit, too. And some of these buildings you're going through down in Sacramento, it's like you're going into a war zone almost, and you know, take off your boots, do this, do that, do this, and it's a point, kind of like, you know, no.
I really dislike chain link fencing, and Pioneer Park, looking at Jeff, you go up there today, and it's got chain link all the way around it. And I was telling Chuck just a few weeks ago that when I first started working up there, I, you know, we were having trouble with people parking all the time up next to the ball field. So Tim Davenport at one point said, hey, I'm gonna stop the park, you know, people from coming into the park. So I put these cinder blocks down with some holes and rebar, and put peeler cores across it. And, you know, it raised, you know, it up that much to kind of create that barrier all the way around the park, because I didn't want to have to put in fencing and look like downtown Sacramento or San Francisco. People would four-wheel drive over those things and break them, and so eventually now we have the fencing. I get it. Anyway, thank you very much to Norton Lewis, Vanner, and all of my staff that have been a part of that project and all of these projects. They've done a wonderful job.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm glad it's progressing, it's, um... So when do you think it's gonna be completed?
Well, I've told them to hurry things up, so, you know. It's gonna be Glenn's job to, to crack that whip.
Probably another year, or...
They're, they're doing what they can. I don't know if Vanner or Eric from Norton Lewis have anything that they want to talk about, but, you know, we push them to get things done as fast as we can. If you guys know me, you know I'm kind of that driver anyway, so, you know.
Yeah, keep it going. Any other members of public like to comment on this issue, as far as the jail project? Looks like not. Any other questions for John about any updates? Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
All right, see ya.
Thank you.
You, John.
Item six D, the Sierra Jobs First Project for Catalyst Funding. Discussing possible action related to a presentation by Mr. Andrew Gardner regarding Sierra Jobs First Catalyst Funding for a small biz entrepreneur startup incubator center, and request for a letter of support.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Onetto and the Board of Supervisors. Good to see you today. My name is Andrew Gardner, and I live in Sutter Creek. I'd like to talk a little bit today about the Sierra Jobs First Initiatives, and that's been going on for a couple of years now, and where we're at in that process, and some of the great projects coming out of Amador County that I've been excited to work with our community leaders and organizations in that process. So just to kind of recap what the Sierra Jobs First is, this was a, a regional, I gotta pull my stuff up here, so I don't have to turn my head. A regional initiative, kind of brought down from Sacramento that reached into thirteen different regions throughout California. Amador County is part of the Sierra Jobs First region. So we went through a series of phases to do research and development, looking at the workforce data, economic data, and then we developed a strategic plan. Over the course of this year, I served as a consultant on the Strategic Planning Leadership Team over the course of two thousand and twenty-four. We submitted that strategic plan in August. And what we want to do here with these goals is create a pathway for investment in regionally-developed economic plans that leverage future state and federal funding to increase high-quality jobs, prosperous communities, and climate resilience. So these are the, the broad goals of the initiative. And we also want to build equitable access to community-led, climate-forward economies with a particular focus on inclusive strategies for historically marginalized, or what we'd call disinvested communities in the process. So you could see we work with six other counties, and stakeholders from tribal stakeholders, community-based organization stakeholders, industry leaders, our community colleges, Columbia College on the west side, Saracose on the east side. And it's been a pretty, pretty exciting process with a lot of people involved.
You have a question for you?
Yes.
How would you describe a community-led, climate-forward economies?
I think what, so what, those are our big, broad definitions of kind of looking at the future of how we can continue to build our economies that are resilient in terms of disaster, climate disasters, wildfires, power outages, where we know, like I know in Sutter Creek, living in Sutter Creek, the Butte Fire, well, that was in Calaveras, but we were all affected by that, but the power outages, and then obviously the pandemic, the effect that had on our small businesses and our local economies was pretty detrimental. So how can we move forward building climate-led, community-driven economies that can become more resilient in the face of those, in the face of those crises?
I will say on, on the COVID deal, I mean, I think some of the pain we brought upon ourselves as a society, especially a government. I mean, I know Amador County, I know, I know this board's tried to do all, all it could to minimize impact to businesses, which I do appreciate, the board's outlook on that.
Yeah.
But something, the reason I'm bringing this up also is I watched sometimes some of the actions we take. Sometimes you need to look back to see what you did, to see what the results were, before you move forward. I watched a spotted owl debacle happen. I could save the spotted owl, and it was, you know, I don't know if I call it Go Green, but, you know, Go Nature, and I love nature. And the end result was we lost our mills all throughout this motherload region, Sierra region, lost our economies, ended up losing our forests, and they didn't save the spotted owl neither. Right now, there's, and you hear about, we need, we need housing for low-income or the poor. There's more wood rotting out in those forests. I mean, you could build cities with it. The mills are gone to cut it. It's laying there now. It's a fire danger. And they're paying people a lot of money to mitigate the hazards, where before, people paid, loggers paid a lot of money to mitigate the hazards. Now they're paying them, so it's just, um...
And I'm glad you brought that up, and the strategic plan and all that work, all those strategies or all those issues came up. And, and the strategic plan, it's over a hundred pages long, but it looks at these target industries, one of which is natural resources, and how we can kind of mitigate and use some of these things. Like you said, like biomass is an incredible opportunity for us to look at all of this wood and this down debris, and how we can kind of turn that into an economic opportunity.
It should have been lumber.
Yeah.
Which is a lot higher value product, on product. But, but yeah, now I guess, I mean, we've got broken eggs, so what can you, maybe, what can you do with a broken egg? So that's okay.
Yeah. So looking at the timeline, we are currently in the catalyst phase. So the strategic plan was submitted in August, and then the next phase is the catalyst phase, which means they're actually gonna throw some money down the pipe. So the catalyst phase, you can see there, there's fourteen million dollars available.
Hey, Andrew, can I just stop you for a sec? Could you explain to my colleagues what the six different sectors are? Could you just mention them, rattle them off? I can't remember.
Yes, yes. There are, there are five target industry sectors, so there are, you're gonna put me on the spot here. There are sustainable recreation and tourism, also thinking about the, the big industries across our county, working lands and land tenure, agriculture and food security, food systems. There is small business and entrepreneurship development, workforce development, physical infrastructure, social infrastructure. There were nine total in there, and I could probably find some more information.
And that all came out of the plan?
It all came out of the plan, yes. I'm sorry that I'm not providing more of the background information. I was, but I can certainly provide all that to you. I have that to you. We are in the, in the catalyst program here, and so this money is to fund pre-development projects that align with the strategic plan. And so today, what I wanted to do is share some of those projects coming out of Amador County, and then ask for a letter of support from you guys to, to support these initiatives. So again, we are looking at pre-development activities and enable the region to develop exploratory projects. So what we have in our opportunity here in Amador is to bring our stakeholders together and our community groups to apply for some of this funding, to do these pre-development work, to think about how we can improve these economies, support our small towns, and support our communities. Next slide, please. So just a little background, what we're looking at, there, I know of two major primary projects that are gonna be submitted for catalyst funding. One is working with the Amador College Connect, who's been a pretty, an important community-based organization through this process, and working with all the other six counties. Everybody wants one. Everybody wants an Amador College Connect, because there are only two community colleges in, in the entire region. Columbia College is an hour and a half away. I have a sixteen-year-old son, and I've been in the school district here, and I, I see the needs to bring a lot of those higher education opportunities to our communities that can't afford the gas, make the drive. It's a, it's a pretty treacherous drive down forty-nine, definitely in inclement weather. And so Amador College Connect, over the last twelve years, has really developed a great program to bring those courses and those opportunities to Amador County. So as we shared that work across the other six counties, everybody said, we would need to do that. We want to set up a satellite campus. We want to be able to provide these opportunities for our students, so they don't have to drive from Alpine County all the way down to Mammoth, or from, you know, in our case, Amador County down to Columbia. So that's a big project. Amador Community College Foundation is working with the RCRC to develop a project to submit for catalyst funding on that. One of the other big projects here is, the one I was gonna speak today about, is a startup incubator. Amador Community College Foundation Board, John Tillman is, he's on the board, and he was pretty, pretty active in the strategic planning phase. He submitted a project called a Professional Business Center to provide services to work-from-home professionals who would like to have access to a professional environment where they would work in close proximity with other professionals from other disciplines. Basically, the idea is we have a lot of people who work from home and work virtually, and they don't have access to a lot of capital, transportation's a barrier, buying all the stuff you need for the scanners and the printers and the bookkeepers and the computers and everything else. Those are, are big purchases for somebody to try to start up a business. So the idea was, why don't we create a center where people who run those small businesses out of their homes, at their kitchen tables, in their campers, and where they can go and get that support and get those resources available to them.
You have a question on that?
Yes.
I understand the idea. I don't, I don't know what's, off the top of my head, if it's good or bad, but it may be good, and hope it'd be good, and maybe bad, but, um, what, what would be your continuous funding source for a professional business center?
That is a great question, and that's one that we've been talking about, because that's a pretty critical piece to applying for the funding, is how are you gonna keep that going? We always run into that when you look for, for these grant, like, cycle funding. You know, when the money runs out, now what? We just close the thing down. And so we've looked at a couple of models. There's one in Bishop right now. There's one in Bakersfield, and we're actually looking at one out of Indiana that has a different, they did the same thing. They got the grants, and they developed these programs, and then they began to work with local, regional investors. If you think about, if you get a clientele that is now using these, using these programs, or using these centers, you can start charging, you know, you get a hundred bucks, maybe you get like the premium deal, two hundred bucks a month, and you get access to these things and more, and then that becomes, kind of generates its own funding and begins to, to support that. This funny, this catalyst funding is just, again, creating a plan to, and a model and a framework to show how that's gonna work and be sustained in the years to come in Amador and across the region. So with that idea, Tom DeWaz is Sutter Creek City Manager. I did a, I did this presentation for Sutter Creek about a month ago, and he said, oh, I'm really interested in that. I think we could work with our Sutter Creek business community and our people and say, you know, I, I think this might be a good thing to pilot here in Amador County, and, and then take that pilot and start reaching out across the region and developing these centers to meet the needs of our small businesses and entrepreneurs.
I have a question for clarification.
Yes, sir.
That's kind of a concern of mine, that this is only gonna be for Sutter Creek and not Amador County.
Uh, no, this would serve all of Amador County. The city of Sutter Creek, they just were the ones that approached me and said, we think that we could probably do something like this. It would be available to all people across Amador with the long-term plan of developing these across, across the region. So perhaps we build a, a second one in Jackson, or one in Pioneer, where everybody can have access.
I was listening to your answer, though, and it, it sounded like it was just for Sutter Creek to begin with.
No, I'm sorry for the miscommunication. This is just the idea that we would pilot, Sutter Creek would just pilot this.
Maybe located there, but available to everybody.
It would, absolutely, yeah. There is no, no exclusion to it, no doubt. This is a, a regional, a regional plan. Sutter Creek is just saying, let's just see what we can develop here in our town, and then we could get that out across the, Amador County, across the region. Everybody is welcome.
I don't think working from home is gonna go away, but at the same time, there's businesses out there, the state of California is trying to get their employees back, and the unions are fighting them. Amazon just called all their employees and said, it's time to go, come back to work.
Yeah.
Because what people are realizing is productivity is not as great when, when, for most people, when they work from home.
Right.
Just too many distractions.
Right, right. And I think what we're really tailoring this to is that of small business entrepreneur, that as somebody who, you know, if you think about all those things you gotta buy, that could be upwards of ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars just for the equipment to get going. And so if I'm a small entrepreneur wanting to start something here in Amador County, I could really get started without those upfront costs by participating in the center or using the services of the center to make my coffees, to use the conference rooms and, and things like that, to, to reduce those costs for startup. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at. This is all very, very in the pre-development phase. Again, this is, these are conversations, these are notes. We are meeting with stakeholders across the county and across the region to talk about this, to talk about ideas, to get, collaborate. What do you think? What would work? What are some other models? And so, again, that's what we're doing for the catalyst phase. We're not actually gonna build anything. We're just gonna develop a framework to really think about how that would work in Amador County and across the region.
So is there a specific site identified, or is this still conceptual?
It's all very conceptual. Yes, there is no site identified.
So it could potentially go anywhere in the county?
It could, it could, yeah. I mean, Sutter Creek is just, they're really the only entity that approached me and said, we're interested in kind of moving forward with this.
All right. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So the four things we want to do with this catalyst funding, should we receive it, is form the partnerships in Amador and regional stakeholders and collaborators to identify the barriers, the needs, the outcomes, and the targeted beneficiaries. So this is about a fifteen-month cycle here.
Just to interrupt for a second, one thing I think would look at is, Sutter Creek is good and fine if they're collaborating, but I think if you really want to make it, have a chance to be successful, you'd have, or you'd want to have it where it's very available to the public, where centrally located. I mean, Sutter Creek, outskirts of Sutter Creek might work, but if you're down in Sutter Creek Central, a little bit harder to get down in there, but you start, look like Sutter Hill, Martel, it's a very accessible area.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I think we're totally open to where, you know, certainly what would, what would be the best-case scenario for, for the county, no doubt.
Yeah.
There's no real, just, you know, just meeting with Tom, and, and he's, it's just me and him, really, and, and... and I'm kind of reaching out to all the partners, doing what I'm doing here today. There's no real, kind of like, this is a city of Sutter Creek thing. This is just, you know, how can we, you know, move forward with this Catalyst funding and take advantage of this opportunity to really think about how we can improve our small business entrepreneurship in Amador County.
Are you familiar with, I think it's Nevada City, that started, it was a tour I took with RCRC years ago, but they got retired people from the media industry in there, and now it's morphed into like 10 other people that have retired have formed their own businesses, and it's just incredible. I mean, one day we were there, and they were getting ready for a conference call with China on a project.
Oh, wow.
So that kind of synergy, if we could get that, has really just blown up that community for jobs, employment, but on an international level, too.
Love it. And one of the ideas is to really tap into the talents of our Amador businesses to come in and mentor and coach our young people wanting to start small businesses and be entrepreneurs. This would just be really a hub where you could really kind of bring those communities together to support that, because there's a lot of great talent out here in our county and across our region to help young people kind of figure out how to do that. The third objective right then is the work, developing the framework and the business plan, outlining the key elements of a startup incubator center, what we would offer. A couple of the things we'd offer, business plan development, software development, collaboration sessions, how to do mission and vision statements, how to set professional goals, having bookkeepers available, office assistants, the whole support system that otherwise would not be available just as a small business out there on your own. And then, objective number four would be to build and pilot a physical facility in Sutter Creek or somewhere in Amador County and begin servicing these startup businesses. This Catalyst funding, and I have the timeline here at the end. Again, we're looking at a 15-month cycle. So we would actually, if we were awarded, we would be awarded in March, April of next year, and then we would have about 15 months to complete our objectives and develop a framework and a plan that we would then start applying for additional funding to build out these professional business centers and startup incubators. Next slide, please. These are just some pictures, just to kind of give you a visual here. We're looking at a place in Bloomington, Indiana. They took an old textile warehouse, brick-and-mortar warehouse, and that was run down on the outskirts of town there in Bloomington, and they got their stakeholders and their collaborators and their investors together, applied for the money, and they completely rebuilt it into a professional business center. So you can see they have the conference tables, they have desks, they have private workstations, they have all the TVs and the technology where people can access all those resources and services. Next slide, and just a couple of other pictures there. Private desk, cubicles where, you know, you would come in in the morning, you're running a job, you need to get your paperwork done, and you could just come in from 9:00 to noon, get all that kind of business administrative work done in a quiet, professional setting.
When was that built?
This, this is the Dimension Mill in Bloomington. This was built, I think, in about 2012, 2015. But again, it was an old warehouse that has just run down on the outskirts of town.
I guess my question would be, I mean, it'd be interesting to see how their, whether funding's coming from them, maintain it, because to maintain a building like that, heat it, cool it, you know, put in all the different infrastructure and...
Right.
You're talking a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, and that's what they did. So they applied for the grants to build, kind of like what we're doing right now. Build it out, build a framework. They got the private investors to help them with the purchase of the equipment, kind of setting it up, and then the people who participate in it all pay an annual or a monthly fee to access those services. So now it is, it still has community support from the county there. I think it's Monroe County in Indiana, and, you know, you have all those stakeholders kind of investing in that.
Yeah, I'd just be curious what the dollars and cents are, you know, money's coming in? Where's that money coming from?
Right. So in Bishop, they are getting ready to open their business resource center on December 10th. So they've been going through this process as well.
Well, I'm saying, this one's been there for, what, 12 years?
I believe so, yeah.
It'd be very good to see what the funding sources are to keep it alive. Is it self-sustaining, or is it bringing a whole bunch of money from a city or county to keep it alive? How's it functioning?
Yes, and I can certainly find more information on about that.
That'd be good to know.
Yeah. I think we are planning on doing a site visit to Indiana, hopefully, in the next couple of months to talk more with the people who are running that. But again, we have these services already in development here within our region, which is important to me. I don't think we need to go too far to find that talent and find these ideas. It's all happening right here in our region, anyway, and I think that's important to work with the people here. This was just one of the, one model that we looked at. Next slide, please. So with the Sierra Business Plan, like I said, it was, it's a pretty extensive plan. It is available on the website, and, you know, we can certainly get any information to you. But basically, this project in particular aligns with the Small Business and Entrepreneurship Strategy area. The outcome statements for that, and that's the big linchpin of the Catalyst Funding projects, is it's got to directly align with these strategic areas. So in the plan, pages 48 through 53, the outcome statements for this strategy, "Small businesses can access capital to launch and grow. Economic diversification creates new jobs in high-wage, high-growth sectors. Downtown cores, business districts, and town centers are vibrant, accessible, populated by locally-owned ventures, and promote a strong and unique sense of place. And then expanded services provide technical assistance to support entrepreneurs and nonprofits at significant regional employers." And then the particular strategies that we would be working towards through this project is to increase the impact of small business development and technical assistance, providers to grow entrepreneurial opportunities, drive economic diversification to bolster the region's resilience by attracting and supporting emerging industry clusters, carbon-neutral growth sector businesses, and value-added manufacturing and tourism-supported businesses. This is language directly out of the strategic plan. And then expand access to capital for startup and existing businesses. This idea has been floating around during the whole strategic planning phase. When John Tillman submitted that, through it, all the stakeholders, we all met in April in South Lake Tahoe, and then we've been meeting throughout the year, said, "This is something that we need to move forward. It's a great idea across the region, and we have a very, very strong, strong project here that I think with the right application and the right data and the right letter of support, we'll be able to get that funding and move this project forward." Next slide. So the application timeline, so the RFA opened on October 15th. It is due on December 15th. Again, this is all in very, very pre-development phase. We don't know where, we don't know how. We're collaborating with partners, and that is all part of the work right now. And so we're in the project development phase, meeting with everybody, gathering letters of support, and then writing the application, which is due December 15th. The governing council, the Sierra Jobs First Governing Council, which means every other month, will be voting on the, all these proposals. There's, I don't know how many proposals are going to be submitted during the Catalyst phase, but they will be voting on all of these in March, and then we should be awarded by May, and then that will be a 15-month cycle to accomplish the objectives I mentioned earlier. So right now, this is what we're doing. We're going around. I met with the Eastern Sierra Council of Government Organization last week. I'm meeting with the Chamber of Commerce next week. I'm presenting to you today to share what these projects are and hopefully get the support we need to move these projects forward for our communities. Thank you. Next slide is my contact information. Happy to answer any more questions.
I think it's a great idea. If you could get these small business developments going on wherever it happens in Amador County, it's probably going to morph into more jobs for people in the community as these businesses grow.
Yes, and that's exactly the goal, right?
Andrew, oh, is that? Never mind. Yeah, just back it up one slide. So this March 2025, when the council votes, the governing council, I believe I'm on that committee.
Yes, you are.
I'm not going to be, I don't think I'll, I'm not going to be on the Board of Supervisors, so I may not be on that committee. So we need to make sure in January, whoever is on Central Sierra EDD gets on that committee and can participate, too.
And we have other Amador community leaders also on the governing council.
Okay, or maybe, maybe someone else can be, you know, in that position as well. So just be aware of that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Karen Dickerson, has she been involved in this?
Yes, she has been, yeah, a leader from the very beginning. I've been working closely with her in the Amador Community College Foundation.
She thought she was going to retire. We're not letting her.
Oh, she's not letting go yet. So again, the letter of support is really just acknowledging that this work is happening and that this is all for the good of our communities and our economies. There's no obligation at this point. Again, it's all very, very pre-development idea generating to develop a framework about how that would look in Amador County and across the Sierra Jobs First region. We certainly would appreciate your support as we move forward.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gardner.
Thanks, Chairman.
Is there any members of public that would like to address this issue? CNN, looking for possible letter of support motion?
I'll make a motion that the chairman sign the attached letter of support for this specific Catalyst project.
And maybe any modifications?
And any modifications, CC is for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second. We have a motion by Axe and a second by Forster. Sorry, Jeff, Forster beat you. Looking for a motion to approve?
We did.
Excuse me. Looking for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any carries unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andrew.
Very much appreciated. Have a great day.
Now, the one we've all been waiting for. This is 6E, discussion of possible action relative to the coordination of work currently being performed by PG&E and future work being planned in the county and Upper Ridge Road. And I think this is put on request of Supervisor Brown?
It is. I'm just afraid on this one is that I've asked both PG&E and our Public Works to see if we can figure out a different way on this. But, you know, PG&E will come in and repave what the work that they're doing on Ridge Road, but I just hate to, for the county to sit there and tear up all that new asphalt to relay tar down, because there's no, you know, we've known for many years that, you know, these roads need their baseline of the underneath the road to work on everything, you know, to make everything last, you know, the 30 years we're expecting. And I just hate to tear up all that brand-new asphalt just to put it back down again.
So basically, where PG&E's done undergrounding work, they're looking to fix all what they tore up and maybe like all their patches.
Yeah, they're good, you know, Shake Ridge Road, they did an overlay, a two-inch overlay with a fabric protector, and I would assume they would probably do the same thing here. And so I'm just looking at it as, can we live with a rusty road for six months? Put signage on there, hey, this is going to be all fixed at a certain point? Or do we just let PG&E do, you know, fix it and overlay it, and then us tear it back up?
Yeah, okay. Would you like to maybe bring Public Works in this conversation, too?
Sure.
He looks really enthralled back there.
Come on up, Rich. Now, the one thing I will say is that this can't be a potential problem down the road for the snow season. If they're, you know, if they're plowing Upper Ridge Road, that we could chip something up. You know, there may be some areas that, you know, we may have more damage. So that's the, that's the thing that we're kind of, we're gambling on, that it won't happen, but, you know, anybody's driven it right now, you know, you gotta, it'll slow everybody down, I will say that.
And I guess the million-dollar question would be, you know, if we say, the main question is, okay, PG&E's going to spend probably a fair bit of money overlaying, redoing that, and would they even be willing to say, hey, if Amador County, we'll give you the money to fix that later, next spring, summer? Or they say, either we fix it, or, you know?
And that's the conversation. You know, this has all just happened within the last week. You know, so this is, you know, I don't know if Rich has gotten in contact with PG&E. I asked the PG&E to get in contact with you. Have they contacted you?
The gentlemen that were in my office, I have not talked to.
You have not talked to them?
Correct. I've talked to the project manager, PG&E's project manager for this project.
Okay.
So I'm going to, yeah, since, like you mentioned, it's kind of short notice, and so I apologize for not having everything up and about, but, so I'm going to have to, what I want to do is I'm going to go away from the mic.
Let's start real quick. Now, don't go away from the mic.
Okay.
You need to, why don't you start with what we're doing? What we're planning on doing, we got funding for the 2.3 million we got from Senator Alvarado Gill. Then what we're, where that's, the status is on that, and when we plan on doing that work.
Sure, okay. So that work is currently under engineering design. We have a consultant on board that's looked at that project. I know they've done some preliminary field work as far as so, borings along the route. And again, as a refresher, it's, we're looking at the stretch from Highway 88 down to Climax Road. That design is not complete yet. They're in the middle of formulating what that pavement improvement will look like. And so, but the idea, and the goal is to be able to have plans and specifications ready to bid out next spring in order to do improvements next construction season. That's the plan. So with that, the thing that, I guess, okay. Thank you. So what I wanted to show is what we would, what we're requiring PG&E to do.
Maybe bring that right up next to you, so you can talk in the mic when you're drawn on that.
This won't look, this won't work very well for your video, but you're the people who need to see it, so. So anyway, you have your cross-section of your road, okay? And PG&E, for example, has their trench right here, okay? So what we would require typically is what we call like a T-section or trench, where we go a foot off each side of it, and you would have a pavement patch here. That's what we would typically do. In this case, we would ask, and PG&E's willing to do this, is to also extend this pavement to the edge of pavement, so that the patch would go from, it's about the center of the travel lane over to the edge of pavement. The trench is not located close enough to the center line to require them to pave the whole lane. So you're talking about a, about a half a lane of pavement patch there. So that's what would be requirement to do.
Question on that, is there any way you could have them go to the center line? Because over time, you'll probably see it drops some, and you're going to have uneven surface.
Well, we have a standard that they're following, and it's a two-inch pavement patch, two inches thick of asphalt.
My question maybe would be this, just looking to the future, but maybe, it's one thing if you're doing a small, small little project here or there, you have that standard, and you follow that standard. But if you have a major project where they're going a long, long ways disruption, I wonder if we shouldn't change that standard, maybe, and say it needs to go to center line?
We could do that, but remember, there is no overtime here. We're talking about coming back and replacing this whole thing six months after it's done.
No, I, I know. I'm just saying, just on a side note.
For future similar situations.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the idea of what they've, what their project and, and based off of our requirements, this is what they're planning on, on doing. Going in, planing out this, this section here and resurfacing it. Our, now, there's about...
You know, one question I'd have is when are they planning to do this work? Because asphalt plant's gonna be shutting down pretty quick. They've not shut down already.
So there's about 4,600 feet of trench out there. Well, this is about almost 87, 87.87 miles, if that, that helps anybody. They're planning on starting this work next week and be completed in two weeks. That's their schedule.
Oh, they got problems. I mean, if the weather holds, it might be okay, but we're almost middle of November. So they're looking paving in the first part of December, almost?
If it takes that long.
Okay.
So like I say, there's almost 47, 4,600 feet of trench out there. It varies. Most of the trench, three-quarters of it's in the eastbound lane. And it switches over and there's the, another quarter of it is in the westbound lane. Now, one other thing I wanted to show, and we've got some, I've got some photos. Let's say if you have your, your roadway here, the center line, and you have your trench running through here. You all, you'll, and we'll see some photos. There's some, sometimes it crosses, like when you're crossing over. Maybe it's to continue, or maybe there's a side road here that they're trying to serve. There's also some cutouts periodically along the way. So if you can imagine their trench and what they've worked on is this. So what we, if we don't do any work, what's left, we've got segments of pavement. And this, this here is maybe a couple of feet wide of old pavement in between their patches. If we don't fix this the way it's planned, you're gonna have all this area, not only is the trench, which is right now been temporarily filled with cold mix, which won't last through the winter, that'll be popping out throughout the winter, as well as these patches here. We've got the existing pavement, which has been detached from the road itself. These are kind of like islands of poor pavement that are gonna fall apart as well. But under what was being proposed is we'd, we'd have this. And so this whole, that all gets eliminated because it gets patched up. Now, I can, and I just wanted to show this because, so you understand what's being in front of you. And I can appreciate where you're coming from with this. But this will become a maintenance nightmare if we don't fix it the way it's supposed to be fixed. I don't know, can you put up the photos?
When they, when they, when we do the whole Ridge Road, will that, all this material be ground up and reused?
Yes.
So there will be some use for the material.
Yeah, it'll just, it'll just be, they'll come by and depending on what's being designed.
It's just double work. It, it is, but there's no way to avoid that at this point. I agree with you.
It, it seems like, like a waste and in some sense it is, but.
So you can...
I'm saying put a sign up on each end of it. Yeah, and, and go from there.
So, I mean, we took some photos of it. You can see where you have the trench. You have some cutouts going off to the shoulder area. There's about a two or three-foot strip there between the trench and the edge of pavement where that's probably not gonna survive very well. Because again, now it's floating by itself. It's not tied to the rest of the pavement like it was before.
You know, question on those, could you, when you, when you have those horizontal laterals, something, something like that, could you put, could you put some hot mix in there and bring, bring it back up to grade with that hole, do you think? Better?
That would be a bare minimum, yes. I don't know if you can just kind of cycle through.
Are you ready?
Yeah. Just, these are different examples.
You know, another question I'd have, I guess, is would, probably a million-dollar question before we argue and argue and discuss it too much is, would PG&E even be willing to do that? If they're not willing to do that, then it's kind of, it's a moot issue.
Right. If they're, if they're not willing to give us money in, in return for not having to do this work, then yeah, I think the, the question is moot. But I, I think if we could get $100,000 in return for having to, having to suffer through this for a winter, I think it's probably worth it doing. The, I guess, I think the, the thing that really, really brought this into focus a little bit more was the, the sound rejection of Measure Q, which says to us that the, the voters think that we have enough money already, that we need to be making it, stretching it as, as far as we can, and this is how we stretch it. It's gonna be, it's gonna stink for the, the driving public. They either go around it or they go through it. But this is what we're gonna have to do, or all of our roads are gonna look like this. Most of them do already, but this is, this is something we can do.
One question I, I guess I'd have, it is what it is, not that I like the, how it's set up, but what about liability? Would there be any liability factor or much?
There's, I mean, always a liability of having a road that's beat up.
I guess, and that was, that was a question I was gonna ask county council is, we're sitting here, we're acknowledging this is not ideal conditions, and there's a likelihood that it, it's going to deteriorate over winter. We get, someone has a claim from this, for example. I mean, in the past, typically, well, I can let Greg address this, but the thing is, we're acknowledging it's kind of in bad shape.
Yeah, let him address it.
I don't know what our liability is moving forward.
You know, I mean, it's kind of the standard answer you'd get from a lawyer. It kind of depends because...
I appreciate you being honest.
On one hand, we didn't create the condition. That's PG&E's work. They have an encroachment permit. You know, arguably, we could say, if we got a claim and there was damage and it was attributed to that work, we could say, hey, PG&E, this is your issue. But there would, they would turn around and say, well, yeah, we were gonna repair it, but you asked us not to. So it's possible that, you know, but we could put, we could sign it, like was suggested, that the road's rough and, you know, rely on that for the winter.
And I will say, if you look at some existing roads, Fiddletown Road comes to mind. It's got some issues there right now that are cold patched, if anything. No offense, Rich, you're doing your best. I get it. It just, it is what it is. So I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty rough. It's rough, I like going in the winter, but it's the Major Q didn't pass. Rich is limited in staff and he's limited in dollars. It's, it's, it's a big, big issue.
So just to back up, the, the standard for if we're liable for damage that happens because of a condition of public property, it's usually if, if we've created it or we've, we've known about it for a sufficient period of time to, to make a repair, to have avoided the harm.
Can't we put up signs?
We could, we could sign it. And, and, you know, there's a difference between a bumpy road or, you know, a damaged road that's not fun to drive on, but not dangerous. And then, you know, if a pothole occurs, then we have to, we have to act on it once we know about it. I mean, it's kind of the position we take now on, say, Shake Ridge. It's, it's in bad shape at, at, at places. We know that, but we, we, you know, we may not know about the pothole that, that...
Like Fiddletown Road and stuff, yeah. You know, one thing too, I mean, it's, the county doesn't have that, or Public Works doesn't have, doesn't have that many available people. And I mean, the question that I'd heard somebody pose, that was a good question, okay, they're up there plowing snow and all hands are on deck and probably not, not, if you have a big snow down low, probably not enough hands. So then, is there some way, if, if PG&E says, yes, they're willing to do that, and we say we want to go that way, is there some way we get some extra help or some people for Public Works? A, you know, a person or two just saying, hey, we got, they're available, so they have a little more staff? Because you're probably gonna have some issues up there if we do this. That, that are gonna, people are gonna say, hey, you know, this is getting really bad. County's gonna do something about it. And they're out plowing snow. And also, when you, when you put in cold, cold mix, it, it does want to pooch out or scatter out. And then you got snow and you got rain and it's kind of hard to really repair it. It's kind of a, the question is, how bad would it get, I guess? And I, I don't know that. Maybe Rich knows, maybe Chuck knows, but...
You know, like you mentioned, things will deteriorate when we're busy doing other stuff. I mean, when the weather's like this, it's not a big deal. If something happens, we can go address it. But probably when this will deteriorates during storms, during cold weather, during wet, snowy weather, we're gonna be plowing, we're gonna be dealing with storm damage or whatever, then we gotta go and treat 4,600 feet of trench for whatever potholes are gonna occur either in the trench or alongside the trench. Because I worry about the, the segment of the road between the trench and the edge of pavement. I think that's just gonna be susceptible for damage. In fact...
That's what I was wondering, those little offshoots, if you could just, quick and dirty, wouldn't be pretty, do some hot mix in those. If, if we went forward. I, I think it'd be advisable to do that because the parallel trenches, I don't think would be too bad.
That's what we're asking PG&E to do. And you, you talk about the work that they're doing under the encroachment permit. They're gonna say, well, that, that's part of their permit is to, is to, to restore the, the trench. So what, they would be done, they'd walk away from it unless they're...
Yeah, they're gonna probably grind it out, like overgrind. I'm just saying, just put some hot mix. It's probably low right now because cold mix sinks. Just say, okay, it's low, put some hot mix there. Bring in a compactor, vibra plate, vibra gray plate or whatever, and just make it level. It'll, I think, it'd probably make it through winter. And as far as a parallel trench, just say, hey, it's got cold mix and leave it at that. It's a thought. But I think...
Oh, I don't know, it's, it's, as you all know, it's a constant challenge to, to, to keep our roads together. And, and I see this as going backwards. I understand the, the question, and I, I understand the, the, the proposal and such. And it, and from a financial standpoint, I, I get that. But as, as, as having to deal with the challenge of trying to keep the roads passable is setting us up for failure in my mind. But that's, that's my opinion. I mean, I'll do whatever's the board's pleasure. But understand that, you know, we have 8,000 people a day use this, use this road. And it'll probably be a little more in the winter with, with ski traffic, skiers going up to Kirkwood, that we don't see today. So, you know, it's one of our busiest roads, if not busiest county road we have. You know, if we had 500 cars a day, I wouldn't worry about it.
You know, I think probably, the big question I see, we probably should get from PG&E what, what they figure it's gonna cost that work. And would they be willing to put that money aside? And, and if they're not willing, if the money's not much, or if they're not willing to put it, put it aside, it's, tell them to go forward. I mean, that's, that's kind of what I see.
I think we oughta let staff do their job and move forward on this. I agree with you Supervisor Brown. It's a, can be considered a waste of money, but it, the timing of it is such that we just need to get it done and, and leave the roads in proper condition so they can at least be driven on through the winter.
And it's just a standard governmental waste of money.
I, I agree, but it's a timing issue.
Yeah, I think this...
Not optimal. Be nice if these two projects had coincided.
You will not get two projects closer to each other than this, these are right now. Honestly, PG&E is doing it right now. Six months after they're done, we're gonna come in. I mean, any other day, the, it's, if we can't suffer for a little bit, then I think we're...
But we are gonna reuse them. The material will be reused.
Eh, yeah. I mean, to a limited extent, but the most what you're paying for is to put it down, not for the material itself.
You're paying for cover, covering up the holes that were created, and that's unavoidable.
One of the questions I have is where these trenches were created. Is there gonna be further settling? So, and, and the, you know, the thought is, after we repave the road, will those areas still settle even further and create kind of like a, a depression where water will collect and accelerate the deterioration of, you know, what would probably be a pretty good, you know, by removing that crown in the road? Do we have to worry about that?
In the long term, I would say probably this season we might. There is compaction on the trenches, but it's never as perfect as we like it. But I would say, you know, with, with the compaction that was done, and I would say through this winter season would provide enough settlement. If there's gonna occur, that'll occur this, this winter.
So you think it'll settle out, so when we come in and repave the road in the spring, then we don't have to worry so much about?
We're gonna be doing a reconstruction, not just a resurfacing. So we're gonna be going very deep.
You're gonna go six inches or...
Yes, and reconstruct versus just repaving.
So wouldn't it make sense then just to have PG&E pay us something extra for their part and then we'll reconstruct it?
Well, that was part of the...
That was what we're asking. It, so to do that, that would involve being, having the public endure the, the rough road.
Yeah, just put up, put up signs saying, drive, you know, reduce speed, rough road. And I think that'll immunize us against any pothole problems, you know, because most of the times, these people are driving way too fast.
Well, it would definitely slow, slow them down. The, you know, the issue's gonna be, it, it will get rough. It will be difficult for us to get to, to repair potholes. And, you know, with, with snow and, and rain and whatnot, it will be a challenge. But the, the other step is to, to make sure that, that we get some signs up that explain what we are doing, that we're saving money by not doing this twice, and...
That would be good.
Yeah.
Just telling the public, hey, this is what we're doing and what.
And that, that the repair is coming in six months.
Can you put the metal plates down? Will that help?
Not the whole way. You certainly couldn't. And that's, that's our problem is that, that this trench goes the entire length of the...
And you don't wanna put those metal plates on the downward hill slide. You know, you'd get the slick.
And taking the snow off, the road crew wouldn't appreciate the metal plates.
Okay.
And it, it will be, it will be bad. And that's, that's, it, this is, it's, it's almost like a trolley problem. The, that you've got a, do you wait or do you waste the money?
I think it'd be really, really crucial, as far as I'm concerned, is how much money we talking about? If it's not that much money, do it. If it's quite a bit of money, it might be worth a little bit of pain and, and some phone calls and telling people, hey, slow down. So I think, will PG&E even consider it?
Yeah.
That's number one. And number two, is, is the money worth it, worth it for the county to say, hey, let's deal with the pain?
Will they give us that number in a, in a fashion that we can make a timely decision?
Yeah.
That's the other question. But right now, if the board is, is interested in it, we will pursue it. If not, then we'll just tell PG&E to finish it up.
I would be interested in, in hearing what that number is. And you know, and if need be, have a... And you know, and if need be, um, have a, if we had to have a special meeting, we probably could. I know Rich doesn't a lot like that answer. I'm sorry, Rich, but.
That's, that's probably gonna delay this by what, a couple of days or a week? Waiting for that answer?
Oh, I, and it's hard to say. All I know is I, the, when I talked to the project manager, they were scheduling to start this on the eighteenth, which I believe is next Monday.
Well, I think they should, they should be able to get an answer. They should know what that number is right now. If they're looking to start, I, I'm sure, I, I would think PG&E'd have a number. I don't think they'd be doing timing material hardly. One never knows though.
My feeling is this is a time you do what's right for the traveling public. And to delay at all is gonna hurt ability for people to navigate these roadways. I mean, if we could, problem, if we could get an answer in a day or two without holding this project up, I'm not sure that would happen. Unless we, we'll give the chair and vice chair authority to, to make the decision.
Yeah, I know, cause you'd have to probably notice a special meeting. Was it seventy-two hours? Twenty-four?
Twenty-four hours, yeah.
Okay. So that could be done pretty quick. I mean, it's, I, I don't mind if, if, if a, if a board talked about it and gave, um, chair and vice chair, um, permission to say yea or nay, but it'd be kind of nice to know where the board's at if we're gonna do that.
I guess, I guess my feeling is, is, uh, let's tough it out through the winter. You know, I, I don't even know if they can do a very good job of patching it, you know, cause it's gonna, weather's gonna get bad.
That's true. Weather is cold, it's rainy, it's wet. Um, and I think, what is it? I think it's fifty-four degrees. I'm not sure. You don't wanna lay blacktop below that. Do you know the number, Rich?
It, it depends on, on the mix design. You can go fifty degrees. I've seen some that if it's forty-five and rising, usually that's the case, you know, if you start in the morning, there's that critical temperature and it's gotta be rising. So if you get to that temperature in the afternoon, you have to stop because it's gonna get cooler. So it just depends on the mix design that they're, they're planning on using.
I'm okay with the chair and vice chair, you know, make that last minute decision. You know, it's, it's one of those things that we want to try to do the best for our roads. We're all on the same page on that aspect. But, you know, if it's not, if PG&E's not gonna give us any money, then it's, you know, it is a moot point.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works, so.
Well, and that, the problem's gonna be how long it's gonna take to get that answer.
Measure Q, it fits right in, we gotta find.
It might take a week to get that answer and then your timeline is, is blown.
I don't think we're gonna wait a week. I wouldn't think hardly.
Wouldn't wait over about a day.
Well, he won't get an answer. I think a week would be maximum time to wait.
Cause the thing is, if they've got their contractor scheduled to start on Monday, they need to be able to tell them to, to not come in or if we want them to do something different or whatever, they need to know ahead of time.
Have you put in phone calls, emails into PG&E yet?
Yeah, I, 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 I kind of let them know this was coming. Boy, I tell you, at, at a minimum, something you mentioned, Supervisor Neto, is, is having them actually hot mix, patch the trench itself. If we do nothing, if we leave it as it is now, and, and I, I tried to find pictures that would show, I mean, the trench looks fine, but the, the pavement next to it doesn't look good. And that thing, the whole thing's just gonna fall apart. And, um, I don't know. I, I'm not sure what to say other what, other than it's, uh.
Just tell us where you're at. I mean, that's.
I mean, that's, I guess I'm looking out for myself and, 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 and the crew working and having to fix this. It's gonna be a real nightmare for the next six months.
Uh, Mr. Ely, yeah, as a former Public Works guy too, I mean, would you concur with Mr. Vila to move forward on this expeditiously or?
I would, um, I'm gonna disagree with, with Rich. I, I would hold off on doing this. I, I think there, it would, the money's not the biggest part. The, I think the bigger issue we've got is the public's faith in, in our administrative abilities. And for, to have what's gonna look like to the public, a, a quarter to a half, uh, road with paved, come in and tear it back up six months later is, is the epitome of, of government stupidity.
Even though it's not really something we did or our fault.
Even though, yes, I, I mean, we can explain it till the, the cows come home, but it will not be heard. It will, they just, they will just see what we do, which is put new asphalt down, tear it up, and then go ask them for a half cent sales tax. That is what they see.
I will say, I've seen that with Caltrans, they paved Highway sixteen, beautiful job. And within weeks, months at the most, but a few weeks, they put up a sign out there, road construction. I stopped and I said, hey, what are you guys doing here? Oh, we're putting in all new culverts down Highway sixteen. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. You just paved it. Yeah, I was, I was just a matter in hell, um, which was probably a little bit different situation, cause they were controlling both aspects. So, yeah, I was, I was very unhappy.
The, the, the things we're gonna be talking about down the road in order to, to save money, to do more, uh, work like this, none of them are gonna be pleasurable. To, we're gonna, we're gonna have to stop doing something in order to have money to do something. And it is, it's not gonna be pleasant, what we do. We don't do a lot of, uh, of arbitrary things, things that are not mandated by the state. And that's, um, that's our, our challenge. But we're, here, I just see this as a, as an opportunity to pinch some pennies and improve our public perception.
Well, okay, um, I, I think I'd, I'd like to see how much money we're talking. And if it's not, not a whole lot, um, maybe, yeah, I understand what you're saying there, Mr. Ely, and I agree with it. But if it's, if it's not much money, I think we, we might take that political hit.
I, I do agree with that too. Uh, uh, I, as, as frustrating as it is, yeah, if they're not gonna give us any, anything in return, then we go get what we got. And then we've at least got the additional asphalt material sitting on there that can be reclaimed.
Yeah.
Hey, so let's give, uh, Mr. Vila a day or two. I, I would say by the end of Wednesday, if we don't have an answer, then the chair and vice chair need to, need to make a decision.
Cause the contractor is gonna be working on getting his crews moved up there.
Yeah, I, I make, I make another day, maybe Thursday, another day Thursday, Thursday at least. It's gonna take a couple of days minimum.
How about midday Thursday? That gives them two days.
That's fair enough.
Otherwise, it's gonna be too late to call off the contractors.
Yeah, um. Yeah, and I think, and, and, I mean, so I mean, they're, they're probably just waiting for yes or no to go. I don't think they have to mobilize much equipment at all.
Well, I guess it's just left ASAP.
Yeah, I can go for that. Got a second?
Well, I, do we have a first? I didn't hear the first.
Was that a motion? Or just? Yeah, I guess that'll work. Directional work.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. And you're okay with, if a chair, vice chair? They might need a motion for that.
Yeah, we need a motion for that.
Ultimately, if there's, yeah, I think we need, probably need a motion, or it's gonna have to come back.
If you're gonna delegate a decision to someone less than the board, um, then I think you need a motion. Uh, otherwise, you'd get the answer and then have a special meeting and then come back to decide.
Looking for a motion?
Well, I would, in that motion, I would include midday Thursday as, as D-Day. So I'll make the motion to delegate this to chair and vice chair to have, uh, Public Works Director, Public Works Director, Vila, try to get an answer as to how much money the contractor will, will give to the county. And set the deadline as, as noon on Thursday.
How much money PG&E, PG&E or the contractor, probably PG&E had think, but whichever one it is.
Whichever will allocate back to the county.
Okay.
Assuming that'd be the PG&E, cause the contractor is working for PG&E, not for us.
Whichever it is, you know.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Chair is unanimous. Sorry about that, Rich.
Well.
We'll do the best we can do.
Cows come in, they come in. That's all I can say. We'll do our best.
We'll send him Frank's weights in his district. I guess it's my district too, darn. But anyway.
Frank's okay, he's gonna be gone soon.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, item six. Yes, this is Board of Supervisors meeting schedule for calendar year two thousand twenty-five?
I'd move to approve the minutes with, uh.
No, this is, um, the, the calendar.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I don't really, I don't really care about this one, so I'm not going to meetings next year.
So only three of you get to vote on this. The, um, really the only thing that's changed on it is the, um, uh, uh, October, November, December schedule. November eleventh of next year is a board meeting day. It's also Veterans Day, so we wouldn't be here. So I moved that one to the week before, which so would be the first Tuesday. So, uh, November fourth would be one. And as such, I also shifted the, the two meetings in October to the first and the third meeting of that, uh, week. Really, the only change, we could change, uh, November twenty-fifth meeting to the eighteenth meeting if you wanted. We don't have a meeting on Thanksgiving week, and we've only got one meeting scheduled for the month of December.
Who cares? You got a meeting on Thanksgiving week this year, right?
We do, yes. So if, if the board wanted to, uh, you know, it's up to you.
I'm good with, I'm good with how it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I don't see any members of the public wanting to comment on this issue, so probably, I think I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cruz, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Chair is unanimous. Pardon?
Take a break.
Sure. Want a break? Yeah, we'll take a break and come back in roughly five minutes.
We've, um, we've only got two items left, but that's okay.
Well.
Yeah, we have.
You need a break, Rich?
If we need to go, we need to go.
I think he needs a break.
Run, run, run.
Run, run, run.